You have the floor, sir.
What's it got to do with this budget?
You have the floor.
How you doing?
Good.
Monty Thomas, Field Ops. I understand what Ms. Blake was saying about feeling attacked or whatever. I mean, when I was in sanitation with the trucks breaking and then us losing six employees, and, you know, we basically ran sanitation. It's a 13-member crew, and we ran it with seven people. And, you know, the residents complaining about the trucks breaking, us picking up their trash late, us not getting there on time. And then, you know, it's the same vehicles, and then everybody just got these letters, which we hear now today, about, you know, $300, $150. So, we still hearing it. And, like, the other day, one of the trucks broke in front of the resident's house. And that was the first thing next. You know, they raising our taxes, they raising this, they raising that, and this is what they send to pick up my trash. You know, so, we, I mean, we catch the same flack y'all catch. I mean, we deal with them every day, Monday through Friday. Just like, you know, you see them in passing, we see them too. So, I completely understand what you're saying. But, I mean, I just feel we should have a voice in the changes that are being made. That's all I'm here for, and that's all I want.
We agree with that.
You know?
We've never said that you wouldn't have. We agree with that. We agree with that.
No, I would like to see the vestment time. I mean, I think 10 years is a long time. I mean, like I said, I've been doing this since I was 18, and it's been five years. I've been to two different municipalities. Each one was five years to become vested, not 10. I ain't never heard of 10 years until I moved here. I mean, I think that's an extremely long time to be vested at a job. I mean, to be at a job before you get vested. So, you have nothing to keep people here? I mean, they do two years and say, "Ain't no big loss, I can leave." Because they haven't earned anything, it's just what they put away. I mean, I think if you shorten that up, it keeps employees here, it makes it easier. And, I mean, I just want y'all to think about it, give us a chance to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we will...
We've got one more.
We do?
Yep. Kieran, you there?
Yes, can you guys hear me okay?
Sure.
Good afternoon, everybody. Kieran Dowdy, I am council for FOP 111, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak remotely. I apologize, I was running a few minutes behind. I just wanted to make a couple of quick points that... I want to reiterate on behalf of FOP 111 and the Salisbury Police Officers that would be in the proposed bargaining unit that we do appreciate all the work that has been done to this point. I think there is frustration because I know that Sebilla, who was there, as well as David Wright, represents the fire union, myself, you know, on behalf of these employees have been looking at draft labor codes since January. And a consistent drumbeat throughout that time has been the need for other terms and conditions of employment to be barguable. I know the administrative vision has changed. I know that there's a process by which this gets proposed and then ultimately makes its way in front of the council. And I hear the need for... I hear that you want to be thoughtful and cautious with the budget, with everything else. But I also hear the general agreement that everybody wants to ensure that the employees you're hearing from today, the employees that are in these bargaining units, would have the right to have input, right? Nobody, everybody's saying they... Nobody is denying that we don't want them to have input. But if we're not going to have the right to bargain over other terms and conditions of employment, you're really kind of tying one hand behind their back. It is such a standard provision in every bargaining code to every unit that has ever gotten bargaining, from the biggest to the smallest, much smaller than Salisbury City, still provide wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment. And it's because other terms and conditions of employment are equally important to those wages and hours. I appreciated Sebilla's remark that it is May Day, which kind of commemorates the international labor movement. And the international labor movement, although it's always talked about pay, it also talked about eight-hour work dates, it talked about time off from work, it talked about weekends, it talks about the ability to raise a grievance with a supervisor without fear of reprisal. And although, you know, and the city has come a long way in its personnel code, a lot of labor agreements adopt the personnel code as gospel. Your colleagues in Wycomico County, because I have the privilege of bargaining the sheriff's contract, actually says that the provisions of the personnel manual apply to this contract. We don't sit down and renegotiate it every time. We just say if there are going to be changes, we have a voice. And that's all that's being asked for, and we ask for other terms and conditions of employment, is to have a voice in those other things. And I think it's equally important because it gives management, it gives the city, an opportunity, frankly, to share those challenges and concerns and have them understood by the workers. You know, not everybody understands the budgetary shortfalls or how a lack of aid from the county is going to factor into the ability to give a raise or not. But when you have a bargaining, a real wages, hours, and other terms and conditions bargaining agreement, everybody has a chance to share their views. Remember, it's bargaining, it's not by fiat, you don't have to agree to anything, you just have to bargain. And so, I hear the decision at the table. I think it's certainly frustrating, given how long this has gone on, and I think, you know, from our perspective, the degree to which we think these changes are kind of a no-brainer. That said, I hope that, you know, the consolidated unions will continue to be able to speak with you, educate you, because they're a real force. And I'm sure that contributes to some of the frustration that I hear, but they are a real force, and we want to be sure that they're heard and that we get the labor code right so that we have a meaningful bargaining, where we do have the ability to bargain fully. With that, I appreciate the time this afternoon, and thank you for your service and for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. All right, with that being the last comment, we will adjourn, and we are convening into a special meeting. So, at this time, I'll call order... I'll call the special meeting to order, and I will entertain...
You guys don't have to stay unless you want to.
I will entertain a motion and a second to adopt a legislative agenda.
Is it moved? Second.
All those in favor of approving the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed, and the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2805 for first reading.
Is it moved?
I can't even say it.
Second? Is there a second?
A second, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 2805, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2023 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating budget, whereas the fire inspector vehicle sustained damage while performing legitimate city of Salisbury Fire Department duties, and whereas the fire department has paid for the repairs to the fire inspector vehicle out of the FY 23 Fire Department operating budget, and whereas the city has received insurance proceeds in the amount of $1,219 for the cost incurred by the fire department to repair the fire inspector vehicle, and those funds have been or will be deposited into the city's general fund revenue. And whereas the insurance proceeds are needed to replenish the fire department's operating budget to bring the budget in line with the planned FY 23 budget expense projections for the remainder of the fiscal year, and whereas the appropriation is necessary to execute, this budget amendment must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the city. Section 1 of ordinance 2805 reads, "The City of Salisbury for fiscal year 2023 general fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows: Increase the general fund revenue insurance proceeds account 01000-456935 by $1,219, and increase the fire department's expense vehicle account 24035-534308 by $1,219."
Questions or comments?
None.
Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2805, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. At this time, we are adjourned from the special meeting, and did y'all want to take a little break before we go into budget, or?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll take a five-minute recess, and then we will go into...
All right.
All right, we are back on. We are now in a budget session. Turn it over to City Administrator Andy Kitzrow.
Hey, thanks for coming. I've invited Keith to come and speak if necessary. So, as we all know, with our original proposed budget, mayor's proposed budget, you heard from people about some of the fees and some of the items that we included as revenues. We have sharpened our pencil and made some philosophical adjustments to a proposal that we'd like to run by you all for some consideration. First and foremost, deals with the fire and life safety fee concept. To date, we have no... We've seen no reason or cooperation from the counties' interest in having a fire and life safety fee in the Salisbury Fire District or in the greater good. So, they have, in our conversation with them, I think they are interested in furthering that conversation but need more time. So, one of the things that we are considering is standing up a new fire service agreement, a one-time extension for fiscal year '24, and spend this next year talking in details about a fire and life safety fee and have some larger group discussions on that. So, tabling that concept. Now, what does that look financially? We still have revenue shortfalls that we need, and we have a couple proposals here. So, knowing that, there's really two pieces here, thinking about fire service slightly differently. There's property tax revenue, that is residential property tax, that's commercial property tax, and then there's also fire service agreement for FY '24, some sort of additional contribution from Wycomico County. What we are proposing, I'd like us to focus on option two first. What you are looking at, and I can summarize it, what this is, is essentially a 10-cent tax increase, property tax and commercial property tax. And that, along with an additional million-dollar capital contribution from the county, would allow us to move forward with our budget. We would have to cut approximately $1 million in essential items. I'll go over those in a minute. But we would not have to cut any of our salary raises that we have proposed. We have been very thorough in looking through all of our options, but trying to not cut that. One of the things we thought this year, which was most important, was to be able to take care of our people. The council-level adjustments that are listed there, the two big, that is four police cars and the ballistic vest, two of the items that you all had considered. And then you can see the rundown of the rest of the items. Some of the things that are important to note, a lot of these items, we can... We've been able to look at repurposed bond pool money or look at some additional salary savings. So, there's an opportunity for us to make this happen without losing what we have in term of personnel. What is being cut from here is the electrician position. We sacrifice that position, and we'll continue to operate as we do currently without... But we are sliding in with this budget, making that happen. Option one is very similar, except we have a... We do not do 10 cents across the board. It is a 15-cent increase for commercial property taxes as originally proposed. That frees up about, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars, and some of those items on the second list would not be cut. The position would not be...
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
I can't see anything that's going on. Would it be possible for you to email whatever presentation you're giving? I'm assuming there's some sort of visual aid here?
Yeah, let me... Michelle, I got one better for you. You got your phone on you, right?
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to text it to you. New school. All right. Okay, just coming your way.
Okay, cool.
Let me give you page 22. All right, so... I will pause there. Let me, if you don't mind, if I can send this real quick to Michelle. Okay. How do we get to this point? A couple... Oh, one other thing I'd like to mention, what is 10-cent property tax equivalent to? That's about equivalent to $125 fire and life safety fee. What's a million-dollar contribution from the county? Approximately the exact same thing. So, the property tax increase that we're proposing is $1 million cash from the county. So, we would not be asking for anything new from the city that we're not also asking for the county. That is, for us to be able to maintain the same level of services that we're currently providing. So, if we're going to ask the city, we need to ask the county. I'll come back to that point in a second. We started off at $300. That was going to allow us to not make any cuts and position ourselves for the next few years. We're dropping down to 125 or 10 percent. We are tightening our belt. We are going to have to be frugal and make some tough decisions moving forward as we continue to do this. But this at least is something I think is reasonable and doable. It is lean, but it is doable. Finally, that is important to discuss, is the million dollars from the county, as I mentioned, and what we heard clearly at the last meeting from the public was, if we're going to ask for additional considerations from the city residents, we should be asking for equal, if not more, considerations from the county here receiving the same service. That is what we are proposing. That is what is outlined in our most recent arrangement, excuse me, proposal to the county's Executive's Office for fire service agreement for this one year coming up. We are asking for that additional contribution of $1 million. If they choose to not consider that, the bigger conversation is, and the conversation we are trying to avoid, is what level of services we continue to provide as a Salisbury Fire Department. I'm going to pause there. Everyone has to let that sink in, but that is something that is a serious topic.
Say that again, I need to hear it again.
If the county is not going to additionally consider adding an additional $1 million to match the increase that we are doing, we need to seriously consider or reconsider the level of fire services that we are providing to the county residents outside of the city of Salisbury.
And if I could, I'm going to give you some numbers and stats that I wish that every citizen, and we're going to try to get it to every citizen, can see about what we're up against. First of all, if you take the total number of calls that our department makes, 15,000, and you take 5,000 calls that we make outside the city limits, and our budget is $14.5 million for fire, that comes out to, if you do it per call, that comes out to $5 million that the county should give us. And I think the county needs to step up, and I think that all the citizens that are going to be affected by the changes we make should go to the county council and should say to them, "What's going on?"
Exactly.
Because it is not right. Second of all, it's about time that we start putting pressure on the county for dual taxation.
Thank you.
We are... We have been for years and years being taxed twice.
Yes.
And the best example I can give you, there are more, but the best example I can give you is we are charged the same tax that county residents are charged for the roads. And we have our own roads department that we pay for, that they don't have to take care of. There's an issue there, and it doesn't stop there, but I can't go through, and I won't go through, the rest of the items that have fallen to that list. And then for the citizens, I'm upset about a tax increase, but let me tell you what's transpired. In ARP funds, the last two years, we've had $4.5, $4.4 million. It's gone. We lived on that. If we didn't have that, we would have been drawing on their surplus, and our surplus would have gone down significantly. Well, it's gone now. We have a minimum wage increase that affects everybody in the city. We have inflation. We have inflation... I'll give you one example. The chemicals that we use in the wastewater treatment plant are... There's a 20... For the same quantity, year over year, is a 26% increase. We are subject to the same inflation that everybody is complaining about in their homes, like $4 a dozen for eggs, as an example. And not to mention the fact that we've only had one tax rate increase in the last nine years, and our expenses have gone up every year. I think it's time for the county to step up, and I think it's time for our citizens to have a voice in what we've been subsidizing the county with. So, when we... Plus the fact that we're going to have in this, $1 million in cuts. $1 million in cuts. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Okay.
I am so glad to hear the mayor saying these things out loud because this has been what has not been discussed. And I know I mentioned it, you know, last week, and I'm encouraging people to go to the council meetings, and, you know, Angela and April both mentioned it tonight.
What's that last week?
We are being forced into this position by the county. And that's plain and simple. They're not paying their fair share, and they're... And/or they're taxing our citizens for services that they don't receive from the county. This is a discussion that people have said quietly for years, some not so quietly, but this has been an issue for years. And I'm glad we're finally talking about it. That said, I understand people are squeamish about this $300 fee, and we can talk about how we can rearrange stuff and that sort of thing. But do Salisbury citizens really want to see us cut a budget, which is threadbare as it is, and lose services from the city? That's a decision that people are... They're upset about this fee, and I understand that, I wholly do. And maybe we can work some sort of magic with the numbers in making it a little bit more fair for folks. But I think, you know, we really need to look long and hard at what we want to see or what we expect from the city. And do you want to maintain the same expectation that you received from the city in years prior? Because we've been taking it on the chin all these years, but we can no longer do that. We're now down on the ground, and we need the county to step forward and do the right thing. But there's no guarantee. So, while people are upset with us for instituting this fee, they have to understand. I'm asking you guys to understand. Please, understand. We don't want to do this, we're not being given much of a choice. And I still stand behind the decision to have the fee until we can get some sort of deal worked out with the county. Because I don't want to see our city services cut. I want to make sure that we're paying our public servants well. I want to make sure that we're getting our public safety folks paid. I want to make sure that we still have clean water and all of those things. But, you know, I mean, I just... I don't know what the right answer is moving forward. But we have to do something. We can't do nothing. And I know people want us to just do nothing, but that's not an option anymore at this point. So, you know, I appreciate all of the feedback we've received, but I'm still very firmly in the camp of, "We have to do something." And it may not look like the original plan, but, you know, I'm trying to download these documents that Andy has sent me. My internet's being slow today, I don't know what the problem is, but, you know...
I texted them to you, I don't know if you can see them or not.
Yeah, I got them there. I clicked them. It's on my end, it's not you guys. But yeah, I mean, I just... I think that there's... You know, we're going to have to move forward in some form. There's no option at this point. There's no option to do nothing.
Yeah, and just to...
Go ahead, Andy.
And again, just to recap, I know I threw a lot of numbers out there pretty quickly. So, equivalently, talk about things similarly. The original proposal was $300 life and safety fee, fire and life safety fee, excuse me, 15-cent commercial property tax increase, 12% water and sewer rate increase. We are not proposing any changes to water and sewer rate, just want to put that out there and on to the side. The reduced proposal essentially goes from a $300 fire and life safety fee to a $125 fire and life safety fee, the equivalency of that in the form of a property tax increase. That addresses some of the equitability that people were questioning, and not making it a flat fee, but more equitable across the value of properties. The difference of a $300 fee, about a $250 fee, would be as if you went higher with the property taxes, which we're not considering a higher than 10%-ish increase to residential. And then we can squeak in with a 10-cent increase, a reduction from the proposed commercial property tax to a 10-cent increase. So, we're not coming... We've rearranged it, we're cutting some things that we think we can afford to cut or move money around that we currently have funded differently. The main thing that we... The one true thing that we'd actually cut, cut would be the electrician position, that wouldn't... We don't have a different funding mechanism for that at this point identified. And then a couple items on our essential items, about $20,000. So, hearing what people had said, here's a reduction, here's a good compromise without affecting our employees. As we listened to earlier today, we are trying to protect and invest in our employees with every last cent we have, and what is not proposed on here is taking away any money out of their pockets from a proposed salary increase.
Well, I do want to say this. Jack, I commend you. But in that budget meeting, the very first one we had, I asked, "Why isn't the county helping with this situation? And why are the same people that were sitting here last Monday, why haven't they gone to the county and raised flags? Because you live in the city and you're taxed by the county as well." So, all this goes hand in hand. We need you to go, you constituents, the residents of the City of Salisbury and Wycomico County, we need you to go to your county council meetings and ask for help. We need the help. We service, as Jack said, the county, 5,000 calls? 5,000 calls in a year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, why doesn't the county think that they should be held accountable? So why doesn't the county think that they should be held accountable for helping us service the county? They should be held accountable. Whether they like it or not, we don't like what we're going through right now, but we're going through it. I truly believe, and I'm going to say this, the city and the county, we all represent one and the same. Why can't we work together and not separate? Working together would be more favorable than anything in the world. We have constituents, we have residents, we have children, we have families, we have single parents, that we need to help, provide for, do things for. And arguing and saying, "No, you're not going to do this," and "No, I'm not," it doesn't help the matter anymore. It hinders us. Come together and do what we have to do for our citizens. It's a dire need. Nobody's begging, we're asking, to do what's right by your constituents, city and county. Thank you.
I think I have one more thing if I could add, that we are only one of two counties that don't have either a tax differential or a stipend that's specific to do a tax differential. In the state of Maryland, we are one of two.
Ms. Blake?
Well, I think we definitely need to also, next year, whatever the process is, to take that to the general assembly and get that on the, something to get us separated with that, and get the tax differential taken care of. Enough's enough with that, in that regard. But, you know, we're talking about the budget, which is vital to employee salaries, which is one of the things that, and where everyone now, because we've been putting ourselves on the sword for over a year trying to figure all this out, seeing that it was coming. And they're also not at the county, so, you know, we can't do it alone. If you're going to complain to us, you're going to put the heat on us, you're going to call us names, bring us down, say we're not doing anything for you. You need to go to the county too, they're responsible for this. And I don't know what the answer is, if it's going to be option one or option two, but it looks like we're going to have a tax increase after all. So after so many years not having one too, that hurts us also. It's not favorable for having, you know... So we do have a new administration, so there's a time and adjustment for all of that too. So there's a lot going on, and this is, the budget is the item to hammer out in the city at this point.
It's my turn? Lovely. And apologies for coming in a little late, I had some prior engagements, so I know that there is plenty that I missed conversation-wise, and I really want to take some time to thoroughly dive into, Andy, what you provided us here, but it does sound like, and I want to thank you and Jack for hearing some of the comments we made last meeting, some of the questions we had, and you both really took our comments and worked on a solution. And I want to add that this is a very complex, many layers issue, and so I appreciate and applaud the work that you guys are doing to identify ways that we can make sure that our residents are, one, taken care of, but aren't feeling too much of the financial burden. So thank you.
Yeah, so, public hearing is next Monday night. There is, we're not seeking necessarily resolution, this is your budget discussions, just understanding process. We could have a full house again on Monday, so, yeah, it's, here's a couple options. This is the most conservative we would want to go without impacting salaries of employees. And there is still, again, the option and potential separation with the county on services that would have further erosion of our budget, but we're hoping it does not get them to that point. We think we can provide the same level of services. So do you want to think of any other options? Do you want to continue to talk about this, take this home, hear what people may say on Monday with these proposal? We can make this look differently, it's a lot of...
So option one and two, right now, still are serving that 50 miles around us county?
Yeah, the 34 square miles of county, 36 square miles, yep.
Okay, 30, I'm sorry.
It's a 50 miles, when you count us two in there, but additional 36. Uh, yes, that is with the consideration that...
Of serving a county who's not helping us financially.
Yeah, we are, if they give us an additional million dollars, we can make this continue to work. Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt, I'm passing. But just a quick thing about the county as well, I just want to note that our union leaders have been discussing this on social media, in which our county executive replied and said that she had offered the city $1 million. So that's something that she's going out and saying. You don't have to confirm or deny, I'm just going to put that out there. She, you know, our union leaders are, have been trying to hold the county accountable.
Sure.
And I just wanted to point that out, because I know everybody's asking, you know, why aren't people going? Our, the folks who are, the leaders of these unions have been going, they have been saying these things, they have been taking the county to task for their responsible portion. And that was the county executive's response to one of those members on social media. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Sure. Michelle, because people are getting confused, we are asking the county for 1.964 million dollars, not $1 million, 1.964 million in FY24.
Yep, I know. And I think that's particularly reasonable, I think that's more than fair for the services that we provide the county. And I just wanted to put that out there. And the folks who have been taking their tasks that she responded to, they're aware that that is not nearly what they should be paying. So I just, I just want to make folks aware, that there are people who are trying to hold the county responsible, we just need more folks.
The, I mean, certainly, the service we provide, the value is much more than 1.964 million dollars, does not make us whole. What, so with the fire service, the fire and life safety fee, I know that's been pulled off, is this an implementation thing? What are we requiring to have that?
Sure. So we think there's a real opportunity, hearing from some of the other fire districts and some of their leadership, that there is a desire to further this conversation community-wide, county-wide. Just need a little bit more time to really think through that, get more feedback, get more buy-in. So definitely something we want to consider, that's why we're only looking at a one-year fire service agreement, something we want to negotiate over this next year. Now, if we all come to an agreement that we want to look at doing a fire and life safety fee next year, we can always readjust our tax increase this year to compensate for a fee. But instead of the city going at it alone, thinking that more community-wide, because again, the way that we already provide the services outside the city, we want to continue in that same capacity, and we know that there is additional fire districts and chiefs who are interested in additional compensation, and think this is a great mechanism to do that.
Another question, so, I know we're still negotiating the fire service agreement and stuff. What is our anticipation that that will come to an agreement and being signed, or, I mean, because we have June 12th for our...
Sure.
When we can, when we do our final budget, and we almost have to wait until then?
I think, you know, I don't want to speak on behalf of the county and their rhythm, but understanding it's similar to ours, I think the first gatekeeper is their executive team. We've asked the executive team to give us a thumbs up or thumbs down by May 15th. So if they are interested in doing this, we know that there has to be a continual process where they present it to their council, and their council then ultimately has to approve it in their budget for an allocation to us. But I think the first part is to see if there is interest, and then we can go down the path. If there is no interest, then we, that's that, and then we can decide what we do next. But we're asking for, you know, give them a couple weeks to understand where we're at. But at some point, we have to...
That's, yeah, that's my concern.
And we're getting close, so...
You know, even though it's May 1st, July 1st is two months away, and that's the, that's the concern of what we do on July 1st, and...
Yep. And just understanding, the numbers that are now presented in front of you, we already know what we would end up doing to reduce our, but it would be, you know, losing a million dollars, it's pay raises. That's what, that's what's next. And 4 percent of the increases that we've proposed, stuff like that, and some additional terming.
If they didn't go through with, we would just continue on the agreement that we still have, or...
So we have, we had an extended agreement terms up through the end of June of this year. The original five-year agreement ended June 2022. We had in a one-year extension that gets us through June of this year, but then this is when we were supposed to be negotiating new terms or new arrangements, which we are actively trying to do, so...
All right, thank you. So I will ditto the comments of all of my council members, and I don't know if anybody has anything else to add to this. If not, we will continue with our schedule, have our public hearing as we have advertised, because we need to do it on the 8th. But I do also encourage citizens in our city and in the county who wish to keep fire coverage, if you live in the county, and then those in the city, asking the county to pay their fair share, please attend their council meeting, which is tomorrow, not sure what time, but I know they have one tomorrow, so please, please attend and voice to the county council your concerns. So with that, this budget session, we are adjourned.